Good afternoon. This is the Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022. It is 2:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramirez Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell and Clerk of the Board Jamie Caldwell. We'll start our meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman, would you like to do a land acknowledgement, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would also like to start today's meeting with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, the Squali and Chehalis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you. Next is our motion to approve the Tuesday, December thirteenth, agenda.
I move to approve the proposed agenda for Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. But before we go through that, I wanted to let the public know that we do have a public hearing at three thirty. I will be pausing our regular set agenda to start our public hearing, which is the ordinance for adoption of A-22 boundary line adjustment. And at four thirty, we do have a Board of Health meeting. The Board of Thurston County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. The general speaking guidelines are as follows. Please introduce yourself, including the address you reside in the county. Please address the Board, not the audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones for those members in the boardroom. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the Board. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, no comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. And all materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter forty-two, point fifty-six of the RCW. No remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board. Thank you so much for your cooperation. I will start with members of the public who have signed up, and then I will see if there's anyone else in the boardroom who didn't get a chance to sign up that they would like to provide public testimony, and then we will move on to Zoom. So, first person I have, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name. And you can correct it once you introduce yourself. Sarah Grollick?
Grollick. So do I need to tell you where I live, my full address? Okay, just, I'm from Yelm, Washington. Okay. So, my name is Sarah Grollick. I'm a medical surgical nurse here at Providence St. Peter Hospital. The statement I'm about to make is my own and in no way represents the viewpoint or opinion of the hospital that I work at. I can sit here and give you statistics you've probably heard ten times over by now. The total amount of nurses, potential graduating nurses, shortage of nurses across Washington State, the ever-increasing salaries of executives at Providence, the at-risk pay that was given to the administrative nurses and executives who don't work face-to-face with the patients and their families on a daily basis, or the matrix not being honored within the hospital and how the hospital is seeing increased productivity and profit with reduced staffing resulting in caregiver burnout. Instead, I'm here to tell you that the nurses at Providence St. Peter are asking for your help. We are in a public health crisis, and it's not a COVID crisis. It's a staffing crisis. We have nurses, whether it be travel or staff, which show up for one day or one week, and they don't come back. Travelers are not renewing their contracts within the hospital and are met with negative responses when they make complaints about the toxic work environment. Even seasoned nurses are fleeing the hospital. Bonuses for new grads and travel nurses are only a Band-Aid for the increasingly toxic environment we are in. The first focus should be on retaining the high-quality and experienced nurses who are already employed at Providence within reasonable retention bonuses given. Providence can offer hiring bonuses, but when the new nurses show up, they see the toxic environment. Are they going to stay? Are they going to leave? Most of them leave. I was recently floated to the ER where I witnessed an even more tragic scene. In the ER and throughout every unit within the hospital, patients and their family members are stating they are being overlooked and neglected. The patients see the short staffing problem for themselves. You are told never to deny an admission of a patient to your floor despite the unsafe staffing and met with extreme pressure when doing so, ultimately leading to the admission. For almost two years, I've watched our unit bleed nurses. Our patients aren't being properly cared for because the workload is too overwhelming, and the lack of staff make it equally unsafe for every single caregiver at Providence St. Peter Hospital in Centralia. This year, I was faced with a wrist injury while lifting a bariatric patient, and one staff member was available to help. That's it. Just one staff member. Many patients require multiple staff members to assist with movement, leaving no one on the floor at all to monitor in case of an emergency or call lights at times. They go unanswered for God knows how long. Even our charge nurses, who are supposed to be available to help the floor staff, have patient assignments and can rarely ever be found to help because they are overwhelmed themselves. Nurses aren't able to take breaks throughout their shift constantly. Our safety nets are failing. Nursing responsibilities are already overwhelming at a time where we should be crisis charting. We don't get that relief anymore. They rescinded that. And it was discontinued because we weren't in a COVID crisis any longer. However, we've moved from one crisis to another, nursing staff shortage. The number of suicidal patients, delirium, mental health, homeless, dementia, and at-risk-for-violence patients have been increasing in numbers and depleting our amount of CNAs and nurses on the unit. Often, our CNAs are even floated to other floors, and we're leaving one-on-ones with no available staff at all. The environment needs to change, and I fear Providence is attempting to make this the new normal for nurses. Right now, change should include building a culture of respect and not asking nurses to endanger themselves constantly when we're at work. When will the hospital executives be held responsible for correcting this issue? Why is patient safety being compromised? We're sacrificing patient safety to pad a bottom line, and change needs to occur. As a member of this community and a nurse who believes in the good people, I'm asking you to help us. We're asking you to issue a support resolution for all healthcare workers from this body to the public. Additionally, I'm asking that the Board vocally support the safe staff legislation in the 2023 legislative session and be a partner in seeking solutions with our statewide representatives. That's all we're asking for is your help, and we're not getting it from anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Megan Costa.
My name's Megan Costa. I'm from Centralia, Washington. I work at Providence Centralia. The statement I'm about to make is my own and in no way represents the viewpoint or opinion of the hospital I work at. In 2020, I graduated into a world of nursing that was in a constant state of change. I work on a medical unit that is meant for patients with a wide range of diagnoses. But during COVID, every bed was filled by a COVID patient requiring oxygen support. Many of our patients could not even turn themselves in bed without oxygen levels dropping. As we learned more about COVID, our care had to frequently adapt to the most current information. It was hard, but I was honored to work with nurses who took their own initiative to research and innovate with our supplies to suit patients' specific needs. These efforts were made possible as we were given staffing ratios specifically for COVID. In other words, if we had more COVID patients, we were provided more nurses. In the aftermath of COVID, our workloads have increased to a point where nurses are forced to prioritize basic safety in ways that do not promote compassionate care. A patient should come to Providence Centralia and have reasonable expectations met. A reasonable expectation used to mean that they would be healing in a comfortable place with nurses who were able to promote that healing process. Now, the safety and care of seven patients is being assigned to one single nurse. This single nurse is responsible for the hourly monitoring and trending changes of all seven patients. A patient can only expect to receive priority treatments now. If they have an infection, they will receive antibiotics. If they're a surgical patient, they'll receive pain control. Respiratory patients will receive oxygen. But there is so much more in between these conditions that they need. They need so much more attention than they're now able to receive from a nurse who is caring for seven patients. Charting alone for that many patients interferes with the nurse's time at bedside, let alone the care that requires us to rapidly move from patient to patient just to make sure their essential treatments are being done. Currently, families are calling the hospital with no one available to update them. Surgical patients are being forced to wait to use the bathroom for the first time since their operation. These are vital concerns that by necessity receive less priority when a small number of nurses are stretched so far that basic safety and treatment must take priority over respect and decency. Nurses are people with critical thinking skills, trained to make judgment calls in their patient's best interest, not task-oriented shift workers. In one room, we may have a patient at risk for harming themselves and others. In another room, we may have a grieving family with an actively dying patient. Both of those patients deserve more of our presence and attention than what is being allotted to them between us and five other patients. We didn't come here asking for help two years ago when the entire world changed, or last year when the staffing crisis became evident. So please ask yourself how bad it must be now that we're here now, asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristi Heridge.
Good afternoon.
Can you move the mic?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
My name's Kristi Heridge. I was born and raised in West Olympia. I'm a registered nurse at Providence St. Peter Hospital. The statement that I'm about to make is my own and in no way represents the viewpoint or opinion of the hospital that I work at. I am here to impress upon all of you the dire healthcare situation our community is currently facing. I have been a nurse for seven years. All of those years have been at St. Peter. I work on a floor called the Acute Medical Telemetry Unit. I function as a medical surgical unit with cardiac monitoring capabilities. And in the more recent years, we have been the designated primary COVID unit at St. Pete's outside of critical care. I am primarily a charge nurse, which basically means I'm the shift manager for my unit on the days that I'm there. The current situation at St. Peter Hospital is the worst I've ever seen in my career, including at the height of COVID. Short staffing has progressed from a problem to a full-blown crisis, and it's costing my patients and your fellow community members their health and access to safe and patient medical care. When my unit is fully staffed, we have ten nurses and two nursing assistants taking care of thirty patients. Frequently, right now, we're down to five or six nurses and no nursing assistants. Our nurses are attempting to care for twice as many patients as they should be. And I say attempting because, right now, that's really all we can do. We are trying as hard as we can to give our patients the best care possible, but no one nurse can be in two places at a time, and it's resulting in suffering for both patients and staff. Our patients are experiencing life-threatening injuries, dangerous infections. Nurses are burning out and leaving their jobs. We're getting injured, and we're suffering work-related trauma and PTSD. A few examples of situations caused by short staffing are: Our incontinent patients frequently sit in their own urine and feces for hours because we don't have adequate staff to give them timely hygiene care. That can lead to bed sores and wounds. That causes dangerous infections. Many patients are unable to feed themselves, but feeding someone, it's incredibly time-consuming, especially if they're confused or if they need extra time and assistance to swallow every bite safely without choking or aspirating into their lungs. That means that people either risk choking or they go hungry for hours until someone is available to feed them. If I can get one full meal into each of my swallow-risk patients per twelve-hour shift that I work, it's a pretty good day for me. And that, it's heartbreaking. Our community comes to us for help at their most vulnerable time, and right now, we can barely feed them. COVID numbers are down, but they're not gone. And COVID is not the only infectious disease that requires the use of personal protective equipment. Because of unstable nurse-to-patient ratios, I am frequently forced to choose between taking the extra time to put on my PPE or getting to my patient in time to help them. If someone can't breathe, or if they're about to fall out of bed and hit their head on the floor, an extra thirty seconds can be life or death for them. But the alternative is that I risk my own health and that of my coworkers and my family by being exposed to contagions. I am constantly triaging who is most at risk of severe injury or death if I don't get to them immediately. Frequently, there is no right choice, and everyone suffers. There's unnecessary pain and death every day as a direct result of short staffing. Every nurse that I work with is feeling the same pressure, and as a whole, we're breaking. I used to love my job, and now I just survive it, and I hope that my patients survive too. I am terrified for the day that there are no more nurses willing to do this work. Our community's healthcare system will collapse, and it will be a direct result of a mishandled and neglected staffing crisis. I am asking for a statement of support from the Thurston County and support in the next legislative session on the Safe Staffing Bill that will be presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Callie Cross.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Callie Nos. I was born in Olympia, and I currently live in Lacey. Thank you for taking the time to hear us speak to you today about something that impacts every person in our community, severe short staffing at our hospitals. The following statement does not reflect the opinion of the hospital or the management where I work, and these words are my own. I'm a nurse at Providence St. Peter Hospital. I've been a nurse for thirteen years, and eleven of those have been at St. Peter on the acute neurology floor. On my unit alone, over the past eighteen months, we have lost countless nurses, nearly all of whom have left due to poor working conditions, unsafe nurse-to-patient ratios, injuries, and severe burnout. The nurses remaining are left with double to triple the workload, and this is dangerous for us and our patients. At St. Pete's, I fill three roles: as a charge nurse, a floor nurse, and a rapid-response stroke nurse. In each of these roles, short staffing dramatically impacts the quality of the care my coworkers and I can provide. Nursing has always been a tough job, both physically and emotionally, but we've never faced a situation like this before. Short staffing leads to one predominant problem that spider webs into endless consequences, and that is delays in care. Delays in care have devastating consequences, consequences that range from falls to pressure ulcers to hospital-acquired infections like my peers have mentioned, and even death. To give you a sense of how short staffing looks on an average day, I would like to focus on just one consequence: patient falls. When fragile sick or elderly patients fall, they get hurt, often badly, and sometimes they don't survive. To give you an idea of how serious a simple fall can be, I want you to imagine that someone you care about is one of the members of our community who comes to our hospital every day after suffering a stroke, a typical patient on my floor. While in the hospital, the patient tries to get out of bed on his own. In normal circumstances, staff would hear the alarm and run to the bedside. We would help avoid the fall and safely assist him. Today, nurses are busy with other sick patients, and there's no one to run to him, even if we do hear the alarm. The halls are empty because nurses are busy. The patient is too weak to stand following his stroke and falls face-first into the sink. He breaks his nose and has a large abrasion on his forehead that will later require many stitches. Because he takes a blood thinner, he bleeds profusely. The fall itself is awful, but the real problem is that he hit his head so hard that he now has a bleed in his brain. He's rushed to the ICU where a breathing tube is put in and a drain is placed to reduce the pressure. Sadly, your loved one is not able to be removed off of the ventilator, and after a week of desperate prayers and an ICU team working tirelessly to save him, your family makes the impossible decision to take him off life support. Your loved one didn't survive, not because of the stroke that he came to the hospital with, but because of a preventable fall that almost never would have happened if my hospital had staffed the way it was even just a year ago. Our staffing crisis has reached frightening levels that are directly harming our patients. Providence has made excuses and is not doing enough to address this problem, so we continue to hemorrhage nurses, causing the crisis to worsen. They could have taken steps to get out in front of this, yet they chose not to. Please support us in our effort to show Providence that they need to do whatever it takes to attract and retain nurses, and the safe staffing legislation being introduced next year can be pivotal in changing the future of healthcare. Please support the passing of this resolution because safe staffing saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Steve Albrecht.
This is a tough act to follow. I'm a retired physician, and I know that these nurses are here speaking not for themselves, but for--
Can you introduce yourself and what you're saying--
My name is Steve Albrecht. I live in District One, soon to be District Five. And as I said, this is a tough act to follow because they've been here speaking for patients, and any of us could be their patients later today or tomorrow. They deserve our respect and our thanks and our support. But Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak today because I'm here to talk to the County Commissioners and ask you to study and support the creation of County Home Rule Charter in Thurston County. I would like to see the Commissioners call for a freeholder election and to support the process of developing County Home Rule by providing staff time and expertise. As you likely know, though I will state for the public record, a Home Rule Charter offers ways that the county government can be modified. Changes desired by voters would be expressed through the work of an elected body of freeholders, and this group would then present a proposed charter back to the electorate to be accepted or declined in a general election. Now more than ever is a very opportune time for this process to occur. Change to Home Rule County will fit well with the growth to five Commissioners and five districts. In stating Home Rule, Commissioners could represent districts and not undergo the process of district election in a primary and county-wide election in the general. The diverse character of our county could be better served when a Commissioner represents sixty thousand residents rather than the entire three hundred thousand. When I know my Commissioners and they know me, it builds trust. And when we trust each other, decisions that are made by the county gain my support. This grows into more local control, better accountability, better representation, and greater voter engagement. Home Rule Charter could offer other ways the county might improve its service to residents, and it might offer more authority for the Commissioners to take those actions on their behalf. And through Home Rule Charter, we could amplify the voice of residents by providing a process of initiative and referendum. Thurston County certainly seems ready for this type of direct democracy. Fortunately, there's no adverse event that's driving a call for Home Rule Charter at this point. Yet, that doesn't mean that we can't or shouldn't make our county government better. And in our state, seven other counties have elected to give their residents Home Rule. That ranges from counties like King with 2.2 million residents to San Juan with only eighteen thousand. So it's not a size thing. Thurston need not delay in joining this group, and as our first step, we could have freeholder elections, and in the next step, freeholders might present a charter back to the voters for acceptance or decline. As I've discussed Home Rule with others in the community, this idea has been met with much support and enthusiasm. And I don't doubt that one could petition and find the required twelve thousand seven hundred voters who would sign to support the Home Rule process, but that seems the hard way to begin. I know that you Commissioners work day in and day out for this county and to make it a better place. And I think you can see the wisdom in initiating at this time a County Home Rule Charter process. So I thank you for listening to me today, and all I would ask is that you give serious consideration to this appeal and that you move forward and call for freeholder elections. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Doctor. Next, I have Barry Halverson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Barry Halverson, Lake Lawrence Lake Management District. I was going to talk to you today about something that I have a lot of passion for, that is lake management districts, our lakes and water quality. But instead, I'm not going to do that. You've received my notes. I may bring it up at the next BOCC meeting. But I just want to say I really appreciate what our nurses do. I have three of them in my family, to include my sister-in-law, and she is struggling. She's been in the nursing practice for over 30 years. She wanted to retire, and she hasn't been able to because of the shortage of nurses. I hope that we can get to where you need and get what you need. I'd also like to give a shout-out to the Yelm High School sports. On 3 December, the Tornados were victorious over Eastside Catholic in the state AAA High School Football Championship game. And for a little town like Yelm, in a state this large, I think that's something to say that they accomplished something great, they had a great coach. That last play of the game was one that you've got to remember, and you've got to look at it on YouTube. So with that, Commissioner, I'm going to relent the rest of my time and let you concentrate on how you can help these people. I know it's going to be difficult with a private organization. You're a county body, not a private organization, but I hope you can do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Pat O'Connor. I know you've marked no, but just want to make sure. Next, I have Christina Janis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Christina Janis, I reside off the Oyster Bay in the northwest corner of the county. I have something else to do here, but yes, I first want to turn to the nurses here, and thank you. Thank you very much. I am a former Providence employee, and I understand the struggle. It's been decades, but this is the worst I've seen it. I've got girls that are my daughters, other mothers, and they have only been in nursing for four years, and they're leaving. They're done. And it's been basically because of their jobs there at Providence. Something's got to happen. We know, we've talked about growth in Thurston County. We've outgrown our two hospitals that we have here, and we're working on emergency rooms, but more needs to be done on the ground, and kudos to you guys, and you've got my full support going into the next session as well. But what I'm here for today is, I talked to Commissioner Edwards earlier, I have stepped down from the Government Affairs position at Thurston County Realtors. I've got some other boards that I'm on and serving on, so I'm going to focus on some of those. But I wanted to do an introduction for our upcoming and now-serving Government Affairs Director that will be overseeing you guys. His name is Chris Lester. We used to go by Chris Squared, because that's what we do. So anyways, Chris Lester will be taking the helm for Government Affairs Director for Thurston County Realtors. I will still be here, because you are my county seat. I am a county resident. I do, after sitting here for two years, am very well-invested in what's happening in our county, so I'm not going anywhere personally, but when I put my hat on, it's going to be Christina Janis and not Thurston County Realtors, so we'll keep seeing each other. And I'm going to just, it's okay, I know Chris didn't say it, but I just want to have him say a quick hi.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with the commission, and have a great day.
Thank you. This is it for my list, but I want to open it to anyone else in the boardroom if you would like to provide public testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Kendra Stedman. I'm a registered nurse. I live in Olympia. The statement I'm about to make is my own, and in no way represents the viewpoint or opinion of the hospital I work at. I've been a nurse for nine years, eight of those years at Providence St. Peter Hospital in IMCU, the intermediate care unit. Over the last three years, much has been asked of bedside nurses. During the pandemic, nurses stepped up to care for our community when little was known about the COVID virus and its impacts were high. My unit supplemented our ICUs as they experienced surges of COVID patients concurrent with ICU staffing shortages. For us, the pandemic was characterized by extreme workloads and mental and emotional anguish. At times, we were met with open hostility from an often poorly informed public, resulting in further injury and isolation. Working conditions in the pandemic were a heightened version of what many healthcare workers already endure. We work long shifts, often at odd hours. We deal with violence at the hands of patients. We are constantly exposed to the pain and suffering of others. Many nurses experience moral injury when we are asked to do things that could cause harm. Although we seem to be past the worst parts of the pandemic, the working conditions of nurses at St. Peter are rapidly declining. Currently, many units in the hospital are staffed at 50% to 60% of the nurses needed to be considered fully staffed. IMCU's staffing plan has a 3:1 patient-to-nurse ratio. For months, our nurses may be assigned up to six patients, with our charge nurses taking full patient assignments as well. In addition, other vital positions on our unit frequently remain without staff, leaving nurses to fulfill those duties, burdened by an unfeasible number of tasks and responsibilities. The needs of our patients are great. When we are forced to care for patients without adequate support, we are unable to respond to needs in a timely fashion. Patients may remain soiled, hungry, in pain, or in fear. When I am burdened with too many tasks, my patients may experience delays in care that result in notably poor outcomes. They are susceptible to serious skin injuries if I can't turn them, or dangerous falls if I'm spread out and running between too many rooms. I worry that I may fail to recognize a subtle change in a patient and that doing so will result in harm. I'm concerned about the injuries to my own body as I work under high stress and without adequate rest and nutrition during my shift. I cannot fulfill my obligation to patients because I do not have the resources available to support the fundamental duties of my job. When we use numbers to describe patients, let us also be clear: I work with flesh and blood, human beings that are complicated, in bodies that are both resilient and surprisingly fragile. When I say patients, I'm speaking of our community members, your friends and loved ones. I'm speaking of you. My coworkers are remarkable people who happen to be nurses. I've come to work alongside them day after day, and I continue to watch their spirits dim. I shared with a fellow nurse that I've started having nightmares two days before coming to work. She told me that she often finds herself crying in her car before her shift. It feels like we are being asked to do an impossible job. These are life and death matters. The fact that we cannot do our job safely is distressing and demoralizing. While nursing shortages are not unique to Providence at this time, Providence's administration continues to fall short in creating a more achievable workload. When unit staffing and patient assignments are questioned, the standard reply from administrators is that it's worse somewhere else. While travel nurse and new hire positions remain open and unfilled, our current staff continue to exhaust themselves, leaving more on the verge of quitting. It is far past the time for action. If Providence does not make this crisis a priority, it risks further injuring both nurses and our community members. We are asking you to issue a supporting resolution for all healthcare workers from this body to the public. Additionally, I'm asking that the board support the safe staffing legislation being introduced next year. Thank you.
With that, one last call for anyone else in the boardroom. Okay, we will move on to Zoom and talk after we have such a few calls.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will call you on the Zoom screen in the order that I have in my computer. First, I have Ms. Marilyn Roberts. Go ahead, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to just speak momentarily today. I am a Thurston County resident. I'm here speaking as an individual, as a resident, and also as the Director of Operations for NAMI Thurston Mason. I am really excited to see that you are adopting a resolution for the stepping-up initiative. I just make you giggle on this one. I was looking back in my emails to discover I sent this to Mark Friedman and Kathy Wolf a long time ago, back in 1516, and then it rolled over to John Hutchings' desk, which I remember having a discussion with him, and he's like, wow, this is a really big process. And I said, yeah, it is. So I'm super thankful for Carrie Henin, who helped move it along and baby it to get it to Leah Landon, and so this is a big, this is a big deal. And I just want to say thank you for doing whatever you can to help make this work, because we know that the behavioral health crisis is not new, and it's not going away. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Emily Snarrows.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, you have four minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hello, Thurston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Emily Snarrows. I reside in Olympia. The statement that I am about to make is my own, and in no way represents the viewpoint or opinion of the hospital I work at. I work at Providence St. Peter's Hospital. I am here to make you aware of the medical staffing shortage affecting our communities here in southern Washington. If we do not address the staffing shortage now, it will only get worse. The reality is that for most floors in the hospital right now, the workload is overwhelming. Under normal circumstances, the nurses' patient load should be three to four patients, depending on the unit. Now, due to short staffing, the majority of our floor nurses are forced to take, on average, six to seven patients without any supportive staff or certified nursing assistants. On more than one occasion, nurses have been told that they would have to take more than seven patients. I can only express how dangerous this is for the patients. We are trying so hard to care for them, but it is impossible with such high nurse-to-patient ratios. For the staff working like this, it has caused a vicious cycle of burnout, resulting in increased sick calls, callouts, or worse, staff choosing to leave the acute care setting permanently, which will make the shortage worse. Hospitals like mine are trying to find solutions for this shortage, but we need more done. Within an acute care setting, the patient's safety relies on the ability of trained medical staff to recognize deterioration in the patient quickly and alert physicians to prevent further decline. With less nurses on the floor who are now responsible for more patients, there is an increase of negative outcomes for patients. It is dangerous to be a patient in the hospital with the current staffing crisis, and it will continue to be increasingly dangerous due to the number of patients nurses are responsible for. Not only is it unsafe for patients, but is also physically hazardous for staff. Though, if you ask a nurse what their biggest concern is with taking six to seven patients, putting their license at risk will likely be the number-one answer. Not only do we risk lawsuits from patients and their families, we will also be responsible for staff under us who we delegate tasks to. With increasing staffing shortages on all sides, nurses are more willing to leave the nursing profession altogether than risk their license. If nurses refuse to accept an unsafe assignment based on unsafe staffing ratios, they fear they will be reported for patient abandonment to the nursing commission. Thus, they will continue to be forced to put the patient's welfare or their own license on the line. This is no longer about how long it takes to get you coffee or water, it's about how long it takes to start your IV anticoagulant when you have a clot in your lung that can kill you. There is a difference between the crisis staffing that we are currently dealing with and changing things to require less nurses on staff. Passing a safe staffing bill for our community will prevent ratios that are dangerous to patients and staff. Those who oppose mandated staffing requirements argue that an absolute staffing requirement is unrealistic for every patient setting, like long-term care settings, and in some cases, they are correct. Different patient acuties requires different staffing, but safe staffing standards can be written to accommodate those concerns, and we must always hold big businesses accountable when patients' lives are on the line. As a member of this community and a nurse, I'm asking for your help as we help you. We're asking you to issue a support resolution for all healthcare workers from this body to the public. Additionally, we are asking that the board support the safe staffing legislation being introduced at the state level next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, let me see, Ms. Marilyn Roberts. That will conclude public testimony, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is County Manager's Update.
Yes, I have a couple of updates for you, Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to announce that Thurston County has hired Mr. David Bain as the new Director for Public Health and Social Services Department. Mr. Bain will begin his tenure here in Thurston County, beginning on December 27, 2022. And I also would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Kurt Harding. He has been serving as the interim Public Health and Social Services Director for the last year, and his day job, he is the Emergency Services Director. Thank you, Kurt, for stepping up to the plate for the last year. It has taken us a little longer than we were hoping to hire the new director, but you have been pivotal in keeping the Department of Public Health and Social Services moving in the right direction, and also you have made about just every single effort to keep afloat all the many critical functions that that department provides to our residents in Thurston County. Thank you, and I appreciate you, Kurt. Next, I'd like to provide the board a little bit of a year-end review of some of the high-level accomplishments the county has gone through in 2022. Borders, and this is not in particular order, it's just general statements. Borders approved, moving forward to five commissioner representation. You passed the home fund. We moved offices and departments to the 3,000 Pacific Building, secured $50 million bond to begin remodeling activities here at the Courthouse campus, increased the county bond rating to a high level, approved the Habitat Conservation Plan. We received the incidental tape permit by the federal government, and the board approved implementing codes and ordinances. We responded to January 2022 snow deflooding events, implemented a state at-work plan, which is an incentive with labor and industries to those employees injured in the work. Implemented the E Defender, the E Prosecutor applications, and EIT continued to support the many different softwares that are coming our way. We opened the Resource Hub. Our maternal-child health nurses delivered 4,937 home visits to 643 families and have had over 100 healthy babies in 2022. We distributed over $22 million in rental assistance, supporting over 2,300 Thurston County households. You approve a very significant new contract for Solid Waste Services in the county. Hired the first climate mitigation senior program manager, who started back in October 2022. Established the commercial property-assessed Clean Energy and Resilience Program, also known as the C-Pacer. The Line Justice Partners worked together to host the Legal Financial Obligation, LFO, reconsideration event. That event was so successful, they relieved 115 individuals of over $500,000 in outstanding legal obligation dues. We partnered with four community organizations to develop nine COVID-19 recovery support programs to administrate over $10 million in ARPA funds. We developed a partnership with Niskali Indian Tribe to advance broadband projects in underserved sections of our community. Last but not least, you have established the Thurston County Council for Racial Equity and Inclusion. Thank you for your partnership, Commissioners, and thank you for a successful 2022. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner Edwards.
No, I think that covered pretty much what happened this year. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairman.
No, just echoing the thank you to Kurt for the work he did to help us get through 2022 in our Public Health Department. I mean, that would be an accomplishment in any year, but in 2022, with the different changes, state and federal resources, staffing shortages, it was a Herculean accomplishment. We appreciate it.
Yes. Okay. With that, we will move on to consent items, A through P. And we added a couple of items this morning at Agenda Setting. County Mayor, if you could read them.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You approved the agenda for today, but just for the benefit of the public, you added a couple of items on your consent agenda. That will be item first, this- That will be item first, item 3E, which is the appointment of Ms. Kristi Kringsman to the current use advisory committee for a one-year term. Next was the appointment of Mr. Jeff Vederup to the current advisory committee, again for a one-year term. Also, to appoint Mr. Joseph Gabou for the current advisory committee for a one-year term. Also, the appointment of Mr. Kevin Cornell to the current advisory committee for a one-year term again. And also make some revisions to item 3P, which is the consideration for extending six contracts. And we added a specific description on those contracts for your consideration. Thank you.
3I was another one, which is also an appointment to the current use advisory committee, Robert Oderman, and it's for a one-year term.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to remove? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve consent items 3A through 3P.
Second?
Removed and seconded. I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minister?
Aye.
Commissioner McYea?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to page five, five pages of consent items. We are moving to department items. Item 4A from the auditor's office is the approval of the voucher list.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your considerations to approve the voucher list for the week of November 7, 2022, for a combined amount of $1,094,999.19. This is in your department item for consideration since on page 20, we have expenditures related to the atrium.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Chairman?
No.
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the voucher list for the week of November 7, 2022, for a combined amount of $1,094,989.19.
I'll second it. It's removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nay. Aye.
Commissioner McYea?
Aye. Moving on to item 4B, which is the approval of the voucher list.
Thank you for your consideration, commissioners, for approving the voucher list for the week of November 21, 2022, for a combined amount of $1,381,640.27. And they are expenditures related to the atrium on page 13.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Chairman? I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the voucher list for the week of November 21, 2022, for a combined amount of $1,381,640.27.
I'll second it. It's removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nay.
Commissioner Minister?
Aye.
Commissioner McYea?
Aye. Central Services, item 5A, extend landscape contract with Monarch Landscape Companies Washington LLC. Jason Ash, Facility Service Manager, will report on this item. Jason?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Ash, Facilities Manager. I'm here this afternoon asking to extend landscaping contract with Monarch Landscaping, also known as NLS, for an additional two years. And I'm here if you have any further questions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Questions? Commissioner Minister?
No.
Okay, I don't have questions as well. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to authorize Assistant County Manager to extend the term for landscaping services with Monarch NLS Landscaping for two years, running from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2024, at a rate of $160,513.24 for 2023, and $165,476.11 for 2024, and authorize the Assistant County Manager to sign any future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second?
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minister?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Commissioners, item 6A, a resolution to join the stepping up initiative. Leah Landon, our Criminal Justice Regional Program Manager, will report on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Leah Landon, and I'm the Thurston County Criminal Justice Regional Program Manager. Before you today is a resolution to join the stepping up initiative. As you know, there is a number of individuals at the Thurston County Correctional Facility who suffer from an acute mental illness. As research has shown us, these individuals are also more likely to have longer stays in our jail, and when they exit the jail upon release, they're more likely to return to the justice system as well. We know that there is an expanding and ever-growing need for additional services and treatment options for these individuals. In 2015, the stepping up initiative was created to do just that for counties. It was created to give us additional tools and resources that we need throughout the country to address this problem in all of our communities. Today, this resolution is presented so that Thurston County can join more than 550 other counties that have stepped up across the country to address this crisis in their local jails. With the stepping up initiative, we can work with stakeholders across the country and learn from them. In addition to gaining tools and resources from them, we will work to address the four key measures presented by the stepping up initiative. Those include the length of stay in our local jail, recidivism, the number of jail bookings, and connections to treatment for individuals within our jail. Together, our law and justice partners will work to accurately measure and then address those four key measures, and we will be able to share that information and then work to provide more resources and treatment options for our community. There's no cost to join the stepping up initiative either, so this is really just us formalizing our commitment to address this crisis here in our community. And with that, I thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Minister?
No questions.
Okay, no questions from me as well. I'm ready for a question.
I move to approve a resolution to join the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in the Thurston County Correctional Facility.
Second?
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. So, I'm excited to do this. The four key measures are directly on point to obstacles that Thurston County has faced. When I ran for Commissioner in 2018, I pulled statistics that showed that we had 45% of the folks in our jail with a mental health diagnosis. That's up to over 60%, according to our jail chief. Now, that's part of the reason that numbers up, a reflection of success we've had in getting lower-level offenders out of custody, so the proportionate share has risen, but we're not doing a good enough job of success on these key metrics that stepping up is designed to try to do address. I'm also excited because we looked at this in 2019, and we really didn't have the staffing or the capacity institutionally to take advantage of it. Our willingness to do this now is leveraging the position we created that Leah holds that really gives us the opportunity to take advantage of this and help us monitor and drive these metrics down and work on policies that will do that. So, for a number of reasons, I think this is timely and potentially very important for our, and to hear Marilyn, who's a leader, to hear her weigh in on this today even makes me more excited because she's a leader in this area in our community, and so if she thinks this is important, then I'm pretty sure it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards? For members of the public, there was a discussion at Agenda Setting last Tuesday where we kind of went a little bit more into detail on the stepping up initiative. But I want to give a big thank you to Leah for all of her work on this, really, you know, we heard from Marilyn how long this has taken to actually get here, and so this just gives us, it's another tool in our toolbox to address definitely a crisis that we're facing, and so thank you, Leah, for all your work and for finally getting this across the finish line.
Madam Chair, you made me think about, talking about in earlier meeting, we also had a jail resource team meeting where we had, if people really want to dive deeper into what this is about, we had folks on Zoom from other counties that have used it to answer questions of the criminal justice stakeholders in Thurston County after what this was all about. So, you can find that on YouTube, right, jail? No, that would not have been. Leah's saying no, we did not livestream that. Okay, very good. Well, that was another work session that we had to try to learn more about this.
Okay, with that, it's been moved and seconded, and we've had discussion. I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner McYea?
Aye. Moving on to item 6B, interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the City of Olympia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 25, 2022, the majority of the Board of County Commissioners passed ordinance number 16128, imposing an additional sales and use tax of 11% for housing and housing-related services, as authorized in RCW 82.14.530. In this particular ordinance, you mandated and required the county manager to achieve two critical elements. Excuse me. One is to develop an interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia, outlining roles, responsibilities, administration, and other requirements related to combining the City of Olympia's home fund with the county's home fund in related services. Number two was to work with the participating jurisdictions to amend the regional housing council in a local agreement to create an administrative executive arm to effectively guide the RHC on the use of the sales and use tax, also known as the home fund, to provide the services in our community at a regional level. This particular item meets the intent of the resolution number one. In this interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia, does and achieves that particular objective, to combine the City of Olympia Home Fund with the Thurston County Home Fund and have a regional strategy, regional funding that will be managed by the Regional Housing Council, and the Regional Housing Council will make strategic decisions and provide strategic recommendations for the Board of County Commissions to award those funds in the future. And also, item number two, tomorrow, the Regional Housing Council, we will have, we will be introducing amendments to the interlocal agreement to complement the regional approach of the home fund. And I'm open for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes. Is there any verbiage in this new interlocal agreement to facilitate prioritizing our own local residents first?
This interlocal agreement does not address operational elements of the home fund. It addresses, creates the umbrella of, what we call an instrument, to have financial transactions between the City of Olympia and the county. To answer your question, it does not have any particular operational elements in this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
I'm glad to see this. This is a realization of the vision that we had when we passed the home fund, that we would be able to coordinate it with Olympia's dollars for greater regional impact, and I'm wondering, when will the first decision-making processes for the county home fund dollars kind of commence? When can we start to see, like, projects and decisions about those dollars?
Very hopeful. The amendments to the interlocal agreement by the Regional Housing Council will be, will receive tomorrow. We will process that as soon as possible. And my expectation is that perhaps you will be receiving funding recommendations from the RHC maybe in the first quarter, if not in the second quarter, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I'm ready for a question.
I move to approve an interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the City of Olympia to combine Olympia and Thurston County home funds, as permitted by law, and in coordination with the Regional Housing Council, and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second. Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nay.
Commissioner Minister?
Aye.
Commissioner McYea?
Aye. Motion passes. It seems like I'm having issues with my microphone, so.
You'd like to switch?
Okay. Let's come, okay, thank you. We'll pick up with item 6C. 2023 Property Tax levying certification. Robin Campbell, our Assistant County Manager, will report on this item.
Commissioner, good afternoon. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. Here's this afternoon requesting that the board certify property tax levies to the county assessor. State law requires the Board of County Commissioners certify the tax levies to the assessor no later than December 15. The amounts on the resolution are maximum amount based on the values that our office received from the assessor. I believe the last values that we received were on November 29. The assessor continues to update the assessed values through the end of the year and combines the actual property tax levies in early January to the treasurer to send out levy notices. Until that time, the board has to certify the maximum possible amount. If you do not do that timely, the maximum property tax that the county is allowed to collect is the amount collected in the prior year. These terms on the resolution reflect an increase in the levy for the general fund, medic one, conservation futures, and the county roads fund. And the board will authorize the increases to these amounts on Friday, at the time you adopt the budget. So again, these amounts are maximums. Part two of this resolution authorizes the levy shift and levy diversion from the road fund to the county general fund. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this levy resolution.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions at this time.
Questions?
Clear as mud, as Commissioner.
What was that?
Clear as mud.
I apologize. There are many steps to the property tax levy. This is one of them.
All right. Well, we understand the process, although the mechanics of the resolutions get confusing on top of the concepts, so thank you.
Thank you, Robin. One second. Okay. So, in the description, it says 2023, but in the action, I'm seeing 2022. Just making sure that that's ranked.
These are the 2022 amounts that authorize the 2023 collections.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
It is all part of the clear as mud.
Sure, okay. Motion.
I move to approve the resolution to certify the 2022 property tax levies for the general fund, roads, medic one, and conservation futures to be collected in 2023, and authorize a road levy shift in the amount of $2,250,000 and a road diversion to the current expense fund of $1,500,000.
Second?
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion?
Come.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 6D, resolution of six member of Thurston County Commissioners from three to five. County Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant RCW 36.32.055, per instance, one, the Board of Commissioners of a non-chartered county with a population of 300,000 or more, and less than 400,000, may ask the voters for a ballot proposition to be submitted in the general election to the voters, authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to increase from three to five members. On June 30, 2022, the Washington State Office of Financial Management released the updated population for Thurston County, confirming that, in fact, Thurston County has reached that threshold of 300,000. And in fact, we are 300,500. On July 19, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution 16181, submitting a ballot proposition to the voters to decide whether or not to expand the Board of County Commissioners from three to five members. The voters spoke, and they approved this ballot measure by 55.19%. This particular measure only required a simple majority. Parallel to this process, the Board of County Commissioners in the Port of Olympia passed a joint resolution back in December 2021 to collaborate on the elements of submitting ballot propositions and also to collaborate on drawing the district boundaries for the potential five members. That resulted in about July 2022 to have a memorandum of understanding with the Port Commission, which outlines the key elements of a three-district committee. And the districting commission, committee, was formed by the chair of the Board of County Commissioners, the chair of the Port Commission as voting members, and also the county auditor to serve as a non-voting member to provide the expertise during this process. So the redistricting committee convened, and I believe in September 9, 2022, to begin the process of drawing district boundaries. One of the first actions the redistricting committee has to agree in five key objectives of drawing those districts. The first objective was to achieve equal population by district. There will be just about 60,000 per district. Maintain the current commission and their elected commissioners in their elected districts. That will be the Port Commission commissioners, as well as the county commissioners. Third was to follow precinct lines, avoiding splitting precincts. Fourth, to achieve a compact contiguous as possible on those boundaries. Number five, maintain communities of mutual interest. And last but not least, no jury mandating. The redistricting committee provided recommendations to Port Commission, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, with two alternatives, alternatives B and C. And the Board of Commission, the Board of County Commission, as well as the Port Commission, agreed on option C. And option C meets those five objectives that I just outlined. At that point, the Port Commission, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, waited for the result of the November election, which has just stated the result of it. And the next step is you held a public hearing on December 7, 2022. You received some public testimony, and all of which were in support of this, the five district boundaries. Although, as you heard today on one of the speakers on the public testimony, they also included testimony related to a charter in the future. So for your consideration today is for you to pass this resolution approving the boundaries for the five commissioners. If the board approves this, the next steps will be for the county, as well as the Port Commission, to submit that resolution to the county auditor to begin the process of electing the two new commissioners in 2023. The Board of County Commissioners and the Board has specific statutes related to District Four that will be Commissioner for District Four and Commissioner for District Five. Commissioner of District Four and Commissioner of District Five will be elected in the November 2023 general election, and they have to go through the same process in the primaries, as you have gone through as well. Commissioner number for District Four will be elected for one year, and Commissioner for District Five will be elected for five years. And that's for three years. And that is very prescriptive on statute. And there is a reason behind that, what is one-year and three-year election. That will align when the staggering elections the current commissioners are going through in this process. So in the long term, District Four and District Three will be elected at the same time, and then District Five, as well as District One and District Two, will be elected on the same year. Actually, it's reverse. District Four will be along with District One and District Two, and District Five will be with District Three. Thank you. And I'm open for any questions. Long journey, and here we are.
Thank you.
Just to make sure there's no confusion, could you clarify the number of years that District Five will be running for?
District Four will be elected for one year. So District Four will be elected in 2023, and that commissioner will have to run again in 2024. And that's when you will be considered running again for District One and District Two. District Five will be elected for three years, since Commissioner Menzger just got reelected for another four years. So by, that commissioner will be elected on District Five for three years. That will align to District Two on the upcoming, next election.
Three.
Yep.
Thank you.
So on the action item, there's two parts. And the second part is to create the districts, which I understood. The first part, increasing the number from three to five. I mean, the voters did that. We don't really have latitude not to do that. The voters dictate that we do that. But we have to formally take action.
That is correct, in that resolution.
And it's probably worth noting that we're the only county operating under this law. Spokane, and I think we'll be able to get some lessons learned from Clark, which went through a chartered process to go to five commissioners a few years ago. And Spokane, which on a different law, is going to five commissioners this year. So we'll be able to look at those examples in terms of how we manage business as a five commissioner body. That'll be interesting. But those, even those two, even though they're analogous, they're under two different statutory schemes. Ours is the only county where we took the 300,000 population threshold and just added two commissioners to the current default constitutional system. So it'll be something new for Washington State.
Yeah, it will be certainly something new. You mentioned Spokane County, and a different part of the statute requires a county who reaches 400,000 to go directly with five commissioners representation without the vote of the people. But also has a nuance, because those five commissioners, unlike your current board, are elected by district, almost tandem as a charter type of scenario, without getting into the charter process and the other elements of the charter process. So yeah, Thurston County will be the first one, and so far, probably the only one for years to come to have a five commissioner representation.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion?
Okay, I move to approve a resolution increasing the number of commissioners from three to five and creating five new county commissioner districts, as are authorized by RCW 3632055, and approved by majority of voters in the Thurston County 2022 general election. Second?
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I guess I'll again take this time to thank the voters of Thurston County for this expansion of the county commission. I know it was something that the board was advocating for, for a variety of reasons. So thank you to all of you. And it was an experience for me this year. I've never been involved with anything having to do with redistricting. And so thank you to the Grier staff, Slawzy, auditor hall staff, for helping us, and also Tara Yella, helping us through the redistricting process. And we had a lot of community involvement throughout that process, too, on what the maps should look like. So very exciting time. Thank you.
I'll throw one more thank you out there to the Port Commission, because they were moving in 2021. And the board sent me as an emissary over there to a meeting, and we proposed that we do this as a joint effort, and they agreed to do that. And I think it really helped so voters could sort of look at both of them together. We could draw the districts so that they're all aligned, and, you know, we could have six sitting commissioners weighing in at the same time, telling the community with a single voice why this made some sense. So I think that was prudent on their part, shows good collaboration between our different commissions and kind of how we do things in Thurston County. So it's a successful effort, and hopefully this will really increase representation for voters and citizens of Thurston County.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thanks. That's all that's said.
I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to community planning and economic development. Couple more minutes. Item 7A, contract authorization for Alliance for Healthy South Sound Coordination. Brad Murphy, Senior Planner, will report on this matter.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Brad Murphy, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I'm here today to ask the board move to approve an interagency agreement with Puget Sound Partnership for a total of $375,000 and a related professional services contract with Ross Strategic as the implementing consultant in the amount of $345,833, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to sign the contracts and approve amendments to the contracts that do not exceed 10%. Thurston County serves as the fiscal agent for the Alliance for Healthy South Sound, which is recognized by the Puget Sound Partnership Leadership Council as the local integrating organization for South Puget Sound. The Alliance has given the responsibility to coordinate development of local Puget Sound salmon recovery actions for the Puget Sound Action Agenda. The projects funded by the Alliance and program coordination conducted by the hired consultant are funded by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. In its role as a fiscal agent, Thurston County oversees how these funds are spent. This involves entering into an interagency agreement with Puget Sound Partnership and a professional services contract with a consultant who coordinates Alliance activities. The majority of the funds are spent by the contractor to coordinate Alliance activities and to fund projects that carry out the Puget Sound Action Agenda. And with that, I welcome any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Actually, Brad explained my questions this morning.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Menzger?
No, I just make the point that Ross Strategic is a, has been serving in this role and doing an excellent job. I serve on the executive committee of this organization, so I'm happy to see them continuing with their good work for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve an interagency agreement with Puget Sound Partnership for a total of $375,000 and related professional services contract with Ross Strategic as implementing consultant in the amount of $345,833, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to approve amendments to the contracts that do not exceed 10%.
Second?
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye. I'm getting feedback. Okay. We'll move on to item 7B, interlocal agreement amendment for voluntary stewardship program. I'm not sure who's. It's not actually.
Andrew, again.
Andrew? Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Defova, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. This item would amend our current interlocal agreement with the Thurston Conservation District for Voluntary Stewardship Program Technical Assistance to add $251,162 to the maximum amount payable. The additional monies are to accommodate additional funding from the State Conservation Commission for cost share projects, which are eligible to incur expenses from October 11, 2022 through June 30, 2023. This amendment will increase the total pass-through compensation amount to $401,162. The current interlocal agreement for $150,000 is funded entirely by State Conservation Commission contract funds approved by the Board of County Commissioners on June 22, 2021. These cost share projects will help advance the goals of the county's voluntary stewardship work plan to maintain and improve critical area function and agricultural viability. That concludes my remarks. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Menzger?
No.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve an amendment to the Voluntary Stewardship Program interlocal agreement with Thurston Conservation District to accommodate State Conservation Commission-funded cost share projects in the amount of $251,162 for the period of October 11, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the agreement and any amendments that extend the agreement up to one year and do not exceed the total amount by 10%.
Second?
Removed and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye. Moving on to Emergency Services, item 8A, FSY 2022, Agreement with U.S. Department of Interior for Operation and Maintenance of River Gauges. And Kurt Harding, our Emergency Services Director, will present on this matter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to present to you and requesting the board approve the federal fiscal year 2022 agreement with the U.S. Department of the Interior for the Operation and Maintenance of River Gauges. And this agreement runs from October 1, 2022 through September 30 of 2023, and it's in the amount of $22,494. Also requesting as part of that, you authorize the Emergency Services Director to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%. This is an annual agreement with the Department of Interior for Operation and Maintenance of Streamflow Discharge and Precipitation gauges on the Deschutes and Skookum Chuck rivers. Emergency Services pays for $16,834 out of the general fund, and CPED pays $5,660 out of the stormwater fund for a total of $22,494. This is the financial model the board has approved in previous years. The river gauge information is vital for flood forecasting by the National Weather Service for Thurston County and as a basis for emergency management's capability to alert the public. Secretary of Questions, I request that you approve the agreement as listed.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, but I might point out that in many of these items today, we've had past discussions in depth about them, and I just want the voters to know that there's been plenty of discussion on this one and the others as well. So no, no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Menzger?
Kurt, do you happen to note, the geography is not specified here. Are these the river gauges in the Chehalis watershed that we deal with through the Chehalis River Flood Authority, or is it a different set?
Well, these gauges are for the Skookum Chuck River and the Deschutes River.
No questions for me? I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the joint funding agreement for Water Resources Investigations with the U.S. Department of the Interior, U.S. Geological Survey, for the term of October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, for $22,494, and authorize the Emergency Services Interim Director to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Moving on to Information Technology. Let's see if we can get done with one more item before our public hearing. Item 9A, Contract with Avaset for Permit Tracking System. And Sherry Ilg, our Interim Director for Information Technology, will report on this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sherry Ilg, Interim IT Director. Thurston County is currently using an outdated permit tracking system, and we aren't taking advantage of technology advances available in this space. In 2020, a core stakeholder group was created, which includes staff from Community Planning and Economic Development, Public Works, Public Health, and IT. The group worked with our QA vendor Soft Resources to gather requirements and publish an RFP in September 2021. We received 12 proposals. The top three vendors were invited to provide onsite demonstrations. The top vendor was chosen, and we have negotiated the contract with assistance from Soft Resources. This request is to ask for your authorization to implement the chosen system with the selected vendors. The core system is Exela, and the implementation and support vendor is Avaset. The 10-year cost for the software licensing, maintenance, and hosting is $3,834,017. And the cost for implementation and 10-year support with Avaset is $1,473,644 for a total 10-year cost of $5,838,427. The funding for implementation will come from the large application reserves. Ongoing support, hosting, and maintenance costs will be collected in future IT rates. And I am here to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Menzer?
No questions.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve a contract with Avaset for implementation of a new permit tracking software solution. Total cost of 10, of the 10-year contract is $5,838,427, including current Washington State sales tax and a 10% contingency, and which includes implementation, licensing, hosting, maintenance, and vendor support, and authorize the Interim Director of Information Technology to execute the contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll just say this, this project has been on, in the pipeline since I got the daily go-to-the-Board four, more than four years ago. So, it's been a long journey to get here. Hopefully, this will be a really positive step for the citizens.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye. So, we are going to take a pause, and we are going to pick up with our public hearing. So, we're in the same scene right now. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll get started. Good afternoon. This is a public hearing for Development Code Docket 8-22, Boundary Line Adjustment. It is 3:30 PM. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on Development Code Docket 8-22 Boundary Line Adjustment that amends Thurston County Code Chapters 18.04 and 18.08 related to the Boundary Line Adjustment Regulations. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed and commented, or mailed and commented. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Associate Planner Andrew Vaughn will provide information on this topic. Assuming members of the public wish to testify, I will read your names out loud, and then I'll, we will move on to our Zoom screen. You will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record, and the clerk of the Board will review the timer. The public hearing is now open. Andrew Vaughn will now present background information of the proposal, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Andrew?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Vaughn with Community Planning. Development Code Docket Item A22 or Boundary Line Adjustment Code Update is a county-initiated amendment. The proposed amendment brings the current BLA code language into compliance with state law and addresses programmatic issues. In addition to the proposed amendments, the changes will improve the application review process for applicants and permit staff by defining review procedures, required application materials, and other regulatory requirements. The amendment will apply to rural Thurston County and the urban growth areas. The Planning Commission reviewed this item at a work session on August 17. A public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on September 21, where the Planning Commission voted 7 to 2 to recommend approval of the Boundary Line Adjustment Code Amendment. A 60-day notice of adoption was provided to the Washington State Department of Commerce on October 5. A SEPA determination of nonsignificance was issued on the proposal on October 12. The Board of County Commissioners was briefed on October 19 with a follow-up meeting during agenda setting on October 25, where the Board directed staff to bring forward an AIS to request a public hearing based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. The community planning webpage was updated prior to the public hearing. A legal notice was issued on November 11. A webmailer was also issued on November 11 to the community planning email list, and a press release was issued on December 2. Public comment has generally been in support of the recommended, recommended changes to provide a greater role for professional land surveyors, as well as require a record of survey. Following the public hearing today, the Board will have the option to adopt the ordinance. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this proposal, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Was that a unanimous vote, Andrew?
The vote was not unanimous. It was 7 to 2. The two Commissioners who voted against it did not explicitly state their reasonings during the vote, but the general conversation that took place prior to the vote was that a more comprehensive review should take place of the entire Title 18 and just the organization of that title.
Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Menzer?
No questions, no. I, I think you said, well, one thing, I think you said this, Andrew, but this was a item that staff proposed, or rather than a particular...
Correct. It's a county-initiated amendment that started around 2008 and has been on and off the docket ever since then. And so, this is kind of the final piece to address the state law and court case, case law that we are not in compliance with.
So, usually if a state law changes and there's a lack of compliance with state law concern, that usually gets higher priority. And I'm wondering why for 14 years we haven't been concerned enough to make this change. You don't have the answer to that, but...
That predates me.
County Manager, do you have any insight as to why this, why this just never got done?
And I believe it was a matter of priorities. As, as the Board approves the docketing process and docket items, this never came up on the priorities over the years. So, I'm glad that finally this made it a priority, and here we are. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Yes, I, you know, I think that was one of my main items when we were going through docket items. It's just seeing how long some of these documents have been on there and the delays that those caused. So, I don't have, Andrew, any, any questions for you? We'll go ahead and move into public testimony.
Nobody has signed up, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does anyone present in the boardroom? Would you like to provide public testimony on this public hearing? Yeah? Okay.
And we have nobody in Zoom either.
Okay. So, with that, Commissioners, any discussion on this item?
No discussion, ma'am. No.
Okay. Are we ready to move and close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Next is a motion to approve the Development Code Docket. Do our Commissioners ready to move forward, or would you like to have a work session following this public hearing?
I have one question.
Go ahead, sir.
Is this issue a timely event? That we should get this done by before 2023 versus does it matter? Are we under the gun in any way?
We, we have been waiting for this item to be, come before you for years. So, if, if the Board decides to wait for next year's board meeting, I don't see any critical element.
I'm good either way. So, at the Chair's discretion.
You ready, Madam Chair?
I'm ready.
I'll move to approve Development Code Docket Item 822 Boundary Line Adjustment, which amends Thurston County Code Chapters 18.04 and 18.08 related to Boundary Line Adjustment Regulations. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I want to thank staff and as well as the Planning Commission for their work on this. You know, from 2008 to now, it's, it's a long time, but that it's finally made it across. So... I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Motion passes. Those two actions that will include our public hearing, we will move back to our general agenda. And we left off on page seven, for those of you following along, and with item 9B with Information Technology. And it's the renewal of annual maintenance for Amanda. Sherry Ilg, our Interim Director for Information Technology, will report on this item.
Thank you. I am seeking authorization to continue our Amanda permitting maintenance and licensing agreement in the amount of $86,482 per year for up to two years. We have used Amanda for 20 years to manage permit applications. This amount is in the IT rates and has been budgeted for 2023. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Menzer?
Just to clarify what I did this morning, that we can terminate this once we get our newest program up and running and functional. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, very good.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the renewal of the Amanda permitting software for current service extension and authorize the interim IT Director to pay Amanda maintenance in the amount of $86,482.41 and any amendments that do not exceed 10% per year for up to two years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Moving on to 9C, and this is the renewal of annual maintenance for Fortinet Network Hardware. Sherry, handing it back to you.
Thank you. I am seeking authorization to continue our Fortinet Maintenance and Licensing Agreement in the amount of $77,518 per year for up to five years. The county utilizes the Fortinet products for our network connection, email security and quarantine, and firewalls. The amount is in the IT rates and has been budgeted for 2023, and I can answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Menzer? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Move to approve the annual Fortinet Maintenance Contract for Current Service Extension and authorize the interim Information Technology Director to pay the Fortinet maintenance in the amount of $77,518.42 and any amendments that do not exceed 10% per year for up to five years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Next, Item 9D, Renewal of Annual Maintenance for GovQA. Sherry?
Thank you. I am seeking authorization to continue our GovQA Maintenance and Licensing Agreement in the amount of $51,060 per year for up to five years. All county offices and departments use GovQA to receive, track, and respond to public records requests in accordance with RCW 42.56. The amount is in the IT rates and has been budgeted for 2023, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Menzer?
No.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the renewal of the GovQA Contract for Current Service Extension and authorize the interim Information Technology Director to pay GovQA maintenance in the amount of $51,060.21 and any amendments that do not exceed 10% per year for up to five years.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to Public Health and Social Services. Item 10A, Approval of Amendment Number 9 to the Washington State Department of Health, 2022 through 2024, Consolidated Contract Number CLH 31030. Kurt Harding, our Interim Director of Public Health and Social Services, will report on this matter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to request that the Board of County Commissioners approve Amendment 9 to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract, who also referred to as the CONCON, number CLH 31030, amending the state, amending the statement of work for COVID-19 response with an increase of funding of $1,090,559 for a revised maximum amount of $12,091,576. This amendment increases COVID-19 expenditures. The Board of County Commissioners approved the base contract on January 11 and also Amendments 1 through 8 in 2022. The Department of Health will continue to send additional amendments for a scope of work and funding through the contract's life. This contract is the mechanism used to transmit federal and state funding for public health services to the county through December 31, 2024. Secretary of Questions requesting the Board approve the amendment and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment and future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
You know, I hate to say this, but we've had discussions on this, leading up to this. I'm sure it's hard for the public to understand how we don't have very many questions on $12 million. Anyway, so, we've discussed it. Thank you very much. No questions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Menzer? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve Amendment Number 9 to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract CLH 31030, amending the statement of work for COVID-19 response and increasing funding, increases funding of $1,090,559 for a revised maximum consideration of $12,091,576.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Menzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Next, Item 10B is the Approval of Amendment Number 10 to the Washington State Department of Health, 2022 through 2024, Consolidated Contract Number CLH 31030. And handing it back to you, Kurt.
Thank you, Commissioners. Here to request approval of Amendment 10 to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract CLH 31030, which amends the statement of work for COVID-19 vaccination with an increase of funding of $240,419 for a revised maximum amount of $12,301,000. for a revised maximum amount of $12,331,995. The Board of County Commissioners approved the base contract on January 11th and Amendments One through Nine, 2022. The Department of Health will continue to send additional amendments for a scope of work and funding for this contract. This contract is the mechanism used to transmit federal and state funding for public health services to the county through December 31st, 2024. Subject to your questions and requesting the board approve the amendment and authorize the interim director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment and future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Menzer?
No.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve Amendment Number Ten to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract, CLH 31030, amending the statement of work for COVID-19 response and increases funding of $240,419 for a revised maximum consideration of $12,331,995. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Menzer.
Aye.
Mr. Mahia.
Aye. Kurt, I see you changed your background.
I missed that part when I went off screen. Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
I was waiting for it. Okay. Moving on to item 10C, amend consolidated homeless grant agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce to add funding for eviction prevention rent assistance funding. Thomas Webster, Senior Program Manager, will report on this. Tom?
Good afternoon, commissioners, Tom Webster. So I'm here to ask for your approval to amend a contract or consolidated homeless grant contract with the Department of Commerce to add $2,471,031 in funding for an eviction prevention rent assistance program. This is funding that comes under House Bill 1277, which was a new document recording fee passed by the legislature. We received this funding. Commerce asked us to then submit an application on how we intended to spend that fund. So the next item on your agenda, I'll provide information on how we intend to distribute these funds. So this is funding specifically for eviction rent assistance. I do need to ask, there's a typo in the action, the amendments. It should be Amendment D, as in David, that we are amending, not C. So I apologize for that error and ask you to make that correction. But we're looking for your approval to add these funds to our system. This will be a permanent rent assistance program going forward and an ongoing revenue source as our current COVID-funded rent assistance program comes to an end. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So let's approve Amendment D.
D.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Menzer, any questions?
No.
No questions for me? I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve Amendment D to consolidated homeless grant contract 22-46108-32 with the Washington State Department of Commerce to add $2,471,031 in funding for eviction prevention for a total contract value of $13,596,206 and authorize the county manager to sign the contract amendment and any future amendments that do not change the amount by more than 10%. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Menzer.
Aye.
Mr. Mahia.
Aye. Moving on to item 10B, 10D, Approval of Eviction Prevention Rent Assistance Contracts. I'm not seeing Keely, so Tom, are you reporting this?
Yes, I'm sticking it out for both items. Thank you, commissioners. So with the contract that you just approved or the amendment of funding you just approved us to receive, we would like to award that funding to three agencies. The county issued a request for proposals earlier this year in August, and then we received recommendations that we took to the Regional Housing Council. The Regional Housing Council is bringing forward these recommendations to fund three agencies to implement the eviction rent assistance program funding from the Department of Commerce. Those three agencies and the funding amounts are to Partners in Prevention Education for $1,175,000, also known as PIP. They will focus on the single adult population. To Family Support Center for $875,000 to focus on rent for families. And for Community Youth Services for $300,000, they will focus on providing rent assistance for 18- to 24-year-olds. So we're asking for your approvals for us to move forward in executing those contracts. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Menzer?
No.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. I'm ready for a motion, sir.
I move to approve eviction prevention rent assistance contracts between the county and Partners in Prevention Education, or PIP, for $1,175,000. Family Support Center for $875,000. And Community Youth Services, CYS, for $300,000. And authorize the county manager to sign the contracts and any amendments that do not change the amount or duration by more than 10%. Second.
It's removed and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Menzer.
Aye.
Mr. Mahia.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to Public Works. Marcus and Tim, thank you for sticking it out with us. So 11A is resolution and call for sealed bids for steel bridge fabrication for Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project, CP number 63025. Marcus Storvik, our senior civil engineer, will report on this matter. Go ahead, Marcus.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Marcus Storvik, senior civil engineer of Public Works. We are requesting permission from the board to call for sealed bids for a contract to fabricate and supply a 70-foot-long steel bridge for the Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project. This bridge will replace an eight-foot diameter fish barrier culvert, which will open up over 10 miles of stream habitat. This action will allow Public Works to contract for the manufacture and delivery of this bridge in preparation for awarding a construction contract for its installation in the summer of 2023. The estimated cost to manufacture and deliver this bridge is approximately $280,000, which will be funded with RE2 funds set aside for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Marcus, you don't happen to know if railroad cars come in 70-foot lengths, do you?
No, not for this application.
Okay. No questions. Thank you for your hard work, sir.
Commissioner Menzer, questions?
No.
Okay, no questions for me. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the fabrication and supply of one steel bridge for the Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project, CP 63025. Second.
It's removed and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Menzer.
Aye.
Mr. Mahia.
Aye. Motion passes. Next is item 11B. It's set a public hearing to hear objections to the proposed role of rates and charges for Patterson Lake Management District Number 23. Tim Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, will report on this matter.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Tim Wilson, here today requesting the board consider setting a public hearing for January 10th, 2023 to hear objections to the role of rates and charges on parcels in Patterson Lake Management District Number 23. Patterson Lake Management District was created by ordinance number 16219 on November 22nd, 2022. A role of rates and charges for the new district has been prepared, which lists charges for each parcel within the district boundaries. Rates used to calculate these charges were initially submitted to the board by petition from property owners and were the subject of a public hearing held July 26, 2022. Following the hearing, the rates and charges were adopted by a resolution of findings and determinations, number 16187. The proposed rates were also stated on ballot material sent to property owners along with the proposed charges to be placed on their parcels. RCW 3661120 directs the county legislative authority to next hold a public hearing to consider objections to the rule. The public hearing is limited to considering written objections to charges improperly or incorrectly assigned to individual parcels only. Objections to the district's establishment, purpose, or rate structure may not properly be considered in this public hearing as they have already been adopted by resolution, affirmed by ballot, and codified by ordinance. Notice of the public hearing will be published in the newspaper of record and mailed to property owners within their parcel numbers, with their parcel numbers and charges. Instructions for preparing objections will also be included with the mailed notice. All objections to the rule must include clear grounds for objection and be provided to the board prior to the hearing. The mailed notice of the hearing will also ask that objections be submitted by January 5th, 2023, thus allowing time to investigate the objections, develop any necessary staff reports or maps, and schedule sufficient time during the hearing for their consideration. RCW 3661 further stipulates that any objections not submitted in writing prior to the hearing shall be considered waived. A property owner need not be present at the hearing to have their submitted objections considered by the board. After submitted objections and statements have been considered, the board can choose from one of three options, including option one, the rule as presented; option two, modified charges found to be inaccurate or improperly assigned and approve the amended rule; or option three, set the rule aside and direct staff to prepare a new rule. However, if the rule is modified to increase charges or include an omitted property, a new public hearing must be held addressing those specific parcels only. And with that background, I would answer any questions the board may have.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Menzer? Okay, no questions for me. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to... Oh, sorry. My mic off. There we go. I move to set a public hearing for January 10th, 2023, beginning at 3:30 or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, in room 110 of the atrium, 3,000 Pacific Avenue Southeast, Olympia, Washington, 98501, to hear objections to rates and charges on parcels in Patterson Lake Management District Number 23. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
And I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Menzer.
Aye.
Mr. Mahia.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to county manager sending items. The first item from 12A, commissioners will report on board work sessions and assigned committee meetings providing updates on actions taken as well as upcoming issues. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess reporting on last week, I would just say budget. That's the only word I need to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzer?
I'll just go back. I think we didn't have a meeting, so I'll go back a couple of weeks. I've been involved in a number of things. Innovative justice meeting this morning, retirement event for the executive director of Lot, meetings with officials in Scott... or sorry, Offutt Lake, steering committee for their Lake Management District effort, meeting with the new Economic Development Council Operations Director, attending the Economic Development Expo at the Great Wolf Lodge, meeting with citizens regarding this, some of what you heard today, public comment about a potential home rule charter movement. I held a town hall with residents of Scott Lake Drainage District to talk about flooding issues and what county might be able to do to help them, had follow-up meetings with staff and county attorneys about that, and there may be more to come. I'm hoping to get the county manager, public work staff, county engineer, licensed use attorney to go through some of the ideas. Attended a League of Women Voters event, attended the emergency management seminar last night, served as a panelist on the Leadership Thurston County event, and was a speaker in two different conferences regarding legacy forests. One was called the Carbon Friendly Forestry Conference, and I was on a panel with officials from DNR and other counties like Wacom and Jefferson County, and then a professor at University of Washington, and then spoke on Saturday at the Legacy Forest Summit in downtown Olympia in an event put on by some of the activists at Summit Lake in my district and Center for Responsible Forestry. So I'm busy.
Thank you. For me, budget did take a hub of my last week, but I did attend intercity transit as well as Leadership Thurston County. And on Friday, when our planning session got canceled, I was able to attend a mayor's meeting as well as the Regional Housing Council Executive Committee. For this week, I've just been having different meetings with both constituents as well as elected officials. I attended the Interbranch Advisory Committee meeting, which is one of those meetings that I'm appointed to by WASAC. And I attended a canvassing board meeting this morning. If the public would like to know kind of what I'm up to on a weekly basis, I do post my calendar on Facebook. So you can kind of see what I'm up to. Moving on to item 12B, the county manager will review Moving on to item twelve B, the county manager will review the Board of County Commissioners' schedule for the week of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting here at four thirty this afternoon, you have a regular Board of Health meeting, and the agenda has been posted. Tomorrow, December fourteenth, you have been invited to participate at nine thirty in the adopt the family wrapping, gift wrapping activities that will be located in the Rochester Room of the three thousand Pacific, which is located on the second floor. The new orientation for county employees has been rescheduled for next year, and you have also been invited to participate in the Thurston County Chamber Event located here at the Olympia Hotel on two and three zero zero Evergreen Parkway meeting, but also you have a little bit of an overlap, which at eleven is a meeting where the Washington State Association of Counties, where they will be discussing the candidates for the Board of Natural Resources. I will be attending that if no commissioners can attend. Thursday, December fifteenth, you have your regular commissioners check-in. At ten in the morning, an agenda has been posted. In the afternoon of December fifteenth, Commissioner Manser, Commissioner Edwards will participate at one in the afternoon, the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization meeting. I have it in the master calendar at one, from one to two thirty.
What date do you have?
On the fifteenth, December fifteenth.
I just sent an updated agenda this afternoon that I was trying to work on getting the notice ready for, so that appointment does need to be updated, it is at noon.
Okay, thank you. And on Friday, December sixteenth, there may be a conflict, since you usually attend the South, the South Sound, South Thurston Economic Development Initiative Meeting, eight in the morning goes all the way into nine thirty. However, you have a nine in the morning, regular meeting to approve all the elements of the twenty twenty-three biennial update budget.
Who's attending this, oh, sorry, finish, go ahead.
So I will encourage the press, either if you attend the meeting at eight o'clock, to be sure, because you, if I may, you shall be here nine in the morning to conduct your meetings and approve the budget.
Who's attending the study meeting is kind of what I was going to ask.
I've kind of advised that I probably will not be there, because I think Commissioner Manser is going to be there.
I'm gonna be there for the first half hour.
Okay, and I just got a canvassing board meeting at eight thirty, so I will not be able to attend.
So on December sixteenth, nine in the morning, you have a long agenda to approve all the many ordinance and resolutions related to the twenty twenty-three, but the annual, no, no, biennial budget update for twenty twenty-three, and also within that agenda, at the end of that regular meeting, Commissioner Manser will be sworn in as Commissioner for District Number Three for the next four years. And Judge Barkley will be in attendance to conduct a ceremony that will be at the end of that board meeting. So we need to delete the noon appointment for that, because that's part of the overall agenda that we have for you at nine in the morning. At noon, we have a potluck ornament exchange located at the three thousand Pacific, second floor, the Rochester Room, where you have the opportunity to share some thoughts and some holiday wishes with your staff.
Will you stop me there? So you just said that three thousand Pacific?
No.
We're gonna be here for the?
It's right here.
Okay.
My apologies, it's right here, since all the meetings are gonna be conducted in room two eighty, so we'll be here. So you don't have to travel, thank you. Thank you for the correction. And two thirty in the afternoon, December sixteenth, you're welcome to participate to deliver the gifts to the adopted family down in the Rochester area. And that will conclude the official business of the Board of County Commissioners for the year two thousand twenty-two. You have no other business beyond Friday, December sixteenth. Your next formal meeting will be on January third. You will have a planning session all day, and that meeting will begin, will start at the three thousand Pacific at room one one zero. And according to the ordinance resolution that you passed early in the year, your official meetings of the Board of County Commissioners will begin at the three thousand Pacific, at the one one zero room on the first floor, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, our next meeting is on January tenth at two PM. I want to wish all of you happy holidays and a happy new year. We will see you next year, thank you.
And the Board of Health?
Oh, and the Board of Health at four thirty PM, if you would like to join us for that.